I would call to order the Village of Westmont Planning and Zoning Commission for our November 13, 2013 meeting. May we have a roll call, please?
Absolutely.
Here.
Commissioner Pill?
Here.
Commissioner Fleet?
Here.
Commissioner Fidesco?
Here.
Commissioner Anton is president. Chairman Richards?
Here. Okay, if you would please all rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
While I have you all standing, please, if you give any testimony tonight either for or against any item, you have to be sworn in. So if you please raise your hands. I swear that any testimony I give tonight shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help me God.
I do.
Okay, now, as, I don't know if everybody's aware that our past mayor, Bill Ron, died away, died this past Monday, so if you would please all join me in a moment of silence in honor of Bill. Thank you all. He was a very good man, and he did wonderful things for me and for the village also. Okay, as you give any testimony this evening, also, if you would just sign in and give the, give your name, also, I would ask that you silence any and all electronic devices. Next item on the agenda is approval of the minutes of the October 9 meeting, which I'm told are not here, so, John, should we have a motion to postpone them until they're available?
You know, we can just skip over them.
We'll just skip over it, okay, very good. Next item of business, new business, planning and zoning item 13030, Marwan Bogdan, regarding the property located at 724 Heath Court, Westmont, for the following: A, zoning code variance request to permit lot coverage greater than the 35% maximum allowed in the R3 single-family detached residence district for the purpose of approving a paver patio. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, everyone, members of the board. My name is Marwan Bogdan, and I am here to discuss the issue of the patio that we have a little extra.
I apologize if I didn't pronounce your name correctly.
Actually, many people pronounce it in different ways. I tend to ignore that. It's okay with me, as long as we address each one properly. That's fine, thank you. The, I would like to give a little background first, so we can understand the whole issue. I am married. My wife Susan should be coming. She's on the train coming from downtown Chicago where she works, and I have two children, Danny and Ava. We lived on 724 Heath Court since we purchased this house. It was a new build by McNattan. It was Phase III, and we enjoyed the neighborhood. We've been there since then, and we plan to stay in that neighborhood for the rest of our lives. We're settled with our life, our business, and my wife and myself, my kids went to school at Holy Trinity, and now to Bennett Academy, and my son going to Loyola for his college. So we plan to stay in this house for the rest of our lives. We love it, we enjoy it, and we have fun with it. We had an issue with the patio that was in existence in the house since we moved in, and the size what it was at that time. It's a brick patio, but over the years, the wear and tear, and we had a somewhat growing tree in the backyard that has been pushing on those bricks, so it made it very unsafe. And the time has come to make some improvement in the backyard, so we decided to renovate, and initially discussed just leveling those off, but then it was too costly for no reason. We had a different plan that was denied by the village because it was either size or the location, so we made changes, but eventually we said, okay, let's just change those, the bricks. We were not aware of this issue of the increase that happened in November 2011, that the limit was 35%, and we had somewhere about 39%. So we thought we would be okay, but just replacing those bricks with a newer one, we've been fine, so let's replace them, but then we were told to stop and apply for variance because that would be the right way to go, which we said, fine. We missed our son's graduation party. We invited people over. We couldn't do it, but we managed. The issue of the flood that we had, and this is, I think this is the main concern about the village, that we've been in the house for 15 years, and with whatever days and whatever storms that happen over those years, we have not seen any issue in that property, whether before or after homeschool has changed and made some renovation and rebuilt the school, which was made bigger, and they added a large or huge basin in our backyard, which in the beginning we didn't like because they erected a wall on our backyard. We used to have a nice, lovely scene all the way through, but then when they erected that wall, put the basin, that practically eliminated any possibility of any flooding in that area. So even with, without it, or with it, we have never seen anything. I've asked my neighbors. My neighbors had no problems in whether flooding or seeing water. My neighbors that I talked to, Doug was kind enough to call me and says, look, I'd come in your support, and other neighbors that I also talked to were very supportive, and I actually did a little survey of our neighbors myself, and I went on my immediate block, which is a cul-de-sac that we have, and everyone I found was in support. They all signed the petition and says, okay, we'll support you. There is no problem that we have seen, and we will likely not see any problem in the future. So I ask your kind approval and consideration of this patio. We're gonna have some shrubs and bushes and whatever, make the house and the neighborhood look better. Again, my interest is to make it as safe as possible, as beautiful as possible. This is the house that we will stay in and die in. You know, we love Westmont. We spend all our time in Westmont, and we tend to stay in Westmont for the rest of our lives.
All right. I would ask if we could have that signed petition from your neighbors?
Oh, sure.
And our staff will copy it, enter it into the record, and they will mail it back to you. Okay, is there anybody from the public? Do you wish to speak in support of?
I'm certainly willing to.
Please stand up and just sign in.
Good evening, gentlemen and ladies. My name is Doug Carmichael. I live at 728 Heath Court. I've lived there for a little over 12 years, and known Dr. Bogdan and his family since I moved in. They're good neighbors, and importantly to me, they keep their property up as well or better than everyone on the cul-de-sac, and I appreciate that. This year, my wife and I had our, we have a paving stone sidewalk and patio out back, and we had all those stones lifted, leveled, and reset and resealed. The house is 15 years old. It was, it was time, and last year or the year before, the Bogdans had their house painted. We just had, just had our house painted this year, and I like, you know, to keep my house up and property. We put in a new fence last year, replaced our old wooden fence with an open aluminum fence, and I think it makes the property look a lot better. It's more open, and I appreciate the neighbors who keep their place up, and the Bogdans do, and I just wanted to come before you and say, I had noticed the trees pushing their patio up, but it was time. They need, they need some work done on it, and I'm glad to see them doing it. I'm sorry that they have this snag on this, this new zoning restriction. I was at the village trustee meeting a week or two ago when we went over the stormwater situation, and I had no personal interest or personal, other than I was just curious, and it was an interesting meeting, and I was very impressed with the committee and the local citizens who partook in that, and I'm certainly willing, I don't think that our property or where we live has any stormwater or water issue, but as a citizen and a resident of Westmont, I'm certainly support the new utility and all, gladly pay my share. I don't think the Bogdans would have any problem with that either, and it might be.
If I may ask, did you experience any flooding in your area with the severe rains this spring?
Not at all.
Not at all, okay.
I did have a, a year and a half ago, so another Rotary member, as a plumber, Matt Jaldini, and I had him come over in, I think it was in 2012, said, well, you just check all of our sump pumps and, you know, it's a big house, and he found a sump pump on the south side. He said, you know, this, since you've lived here, the sump pump has never, it wasn't, he said, it's never run because the connection wasn't, wasn't there, and so, well, that's interesting. So he put in a new sump pump there, but no, we have never had an issue, nor have any of the neighbors I know of with water. So, at any rate, that was all I had to say. I wanted to support my neighbors, and I know you have a decision to make.
Okay, thank you very much, sir.
Certainly.
And would this be your wife?
That's my wife, Susan.
Okay, do you wish to comment or anything?
Um, yeah.
Yeah. If you do, you have to be sworn in, so if you please raise your hand. Any testimony I give this evening shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help me God.
I will say anything but, I do.
And if you would sign in, please?
Sure. I just would like to ask your permission to have us repair our patio. As Mr. Carmichael mentioned, it's, the tree roots have started picking it up, and it, we were not able to, actually, one of our friends came and she had to, and she fell down on the patio because it was not leveled anymore. We wanted to fix it, and we did not know that the problem is gonna be that big. We expected that, okay, fixing it and adding some landscaping, it would make it look better, and it would make it better, also safer for everybody. So we started with this project, and we did not understand why all that big deal happened. I know that there's a lot of reasons, and you all know why it is, but we would expect that, I would like to ask your permission for us to fix it and make it look better and make it safer. That's it.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, seeing nobody in the audience, we'll close the public comment. Staff, anything?
The applicant's lot is located in a drainage study area, which is why the lot coverage is restricted to 35%, and that's why staff cannot administratively approve up to 40%. But that being said, the subdivision was built with detention that covers up to 40% lot coverage for each of the lots, so our engineer is comfortable with the request as long as they stay within the proposed boundaries.
Thank you very much. Okay, we'll start with the commissioners. Commissioner Thomas?
You just answered my question that the detention that was built for the subdivision will cover, my question was, they said that it would cover their request. My question was, would it, would it cover everybody in the subdivision, which would be fair, you know, and you're saying that it would. I also find it kind of strange that this is in a area where we have the restriction, and no neighbors have seen any evidence of flooding, or, not like other neighborhoods, we've had come in here with boats floating down the street.
All your friends.
And stuff, yeah, my friend.
Some of the neighborhoods haven't been built with detention, which is probably why, so the detention has probably helped their subdivision in this instance.
Okay. So, you mentioned about replacing the bricks. Were you planning on replacing it brick for brick, just making it more level and that, or are you expanding it, or?
There is actually a slight expansion. That's the, actually, the extra maybe 5%, but it's leveled already leveled. The area is already leveled. And this is the only leveled area in our backyard. After that, there are some slopes or something in, on the grass area, so that's the only area that is usable for seeding and inviting people. But would it be brick for brick? Probably almost, but brick for brick.
But the expansion is what's putting you past the 35 to the 40?
Exactly. The design would be slightly different from what we have already, so since we brought this company, and they made the design where an area that is more of a square rather than, yes, so, you know, the area that is.
If you leave it there, it'll go on the screen.
That way the home audience can see it also.
So, so this is the problem, because this is made a square, this will be smaller in here, and this would be expanded to this here, so there will be a square seeding, a little round in there. So that's, that's probably the added area in there.
And you are aware that the bricks that, I'm assuming the ones that are in your front yard that you're planting, those are being ready to be used?
Yes.
For your improvement?
Yes, exactly.
That those are not impervious, they're pervious, right?
They're actually not pervious. They're, they're pavers, but they're not, but they're not pervious.
Okay.
Certain pavers are built specifically to allow water to infiltrate through them, and unfortunately, this style of paver does not allow that.
Right, and that's.
Otherwise, it would be counted as 50% of the lot coverage.
Yeah, so you could get that.
If it would allow water to drain, it would not count as much against you?
Right.
Some let it come through, some do not.
So if we change the kind of stone that we ordered the paving, it would be allowed up to 50%? Do we change the kind of?
Well, can I, can I make a comment here? We don't want to make it any bigger. The size is fair enough with this one, which would seat enough people. The issue of the stones, the previous stones was probably similar to this one, and between the stones, you would leave a little space and still seep through. I understand the, you know, from the architectural standpoint, there are some different kinds and whatever, which was not an issue even with the previous one. We've never had a problem. The size that we had before was very close to this one, and we've never had, neither us nor our neighbors had any issue with flooding. The water did not really seep through any area, did not cause any problem. My neighbors didn't have any problems, so we've never seen anything like that.
I initially had, had some questions and problems with this, with, especially with the detention, and since the detention is not an issue for the thing, I don't have as much of a problem as I thought I was going to, and that's why we have these hearings, so that you can explain to me.
Thank you.
Why I don't have an issue.
Thank you.
Which I do not now.
Thank you for not having an issue.
That's all I have, thank you.
I appreciate that. Thanks.
Commissioner Pill? Yes, perhaps I could summarize this a little bit. It seems that you have a lot that has an existing patio on it that covers about 38.6%. Since the house was built, the rules were changed to bring it down to 35%. You now want to replace and fix the patio, and you want to make a small expansion of about 100 square feet, which is about 10 by 10.
Probably, yes.
Which is gonna result in about 40%, which takes it back to what the area was originally designed and built for.
Correct.
I have no problem with this. The rest of your backyard is straight downhill. You've never had a problem in 15 years, and you've got neighbors here who've had the same thing. I support it 100%.
Thanks a lot.
Commissioner Anton?
Love it. Good luck.
Thank you.
Commissioner Fidesco?
I'm your neighbor. I live a couple blocks away. I have a similar house as yours, and I go through the, right next to your, your street daily, and I have never, and I have lived there 17 years prior to your house being built, and I've never seen any water in that area. Other areas, you know, I have, you know, if you go south of us to Ashford, there's a big retention area. I've seen water there, but not in the McNattan homes, you know, and so I completely support it. I don't have a problem with it.
Commissioner Fleet?
No questions. Good luck.
Thank you.
And I, sir, echo their sentiments that I see no problem whatsoever. If you didn't have flooding this last springtime?
Never.
You're never going to have any.
Thank you.
Okay. Under planning and zoning item 13030, I would entertain a motion to recommend approval to the Board of Trustees. Item A, zoning code variance request to permit lot coverage greater than the 35% maximum allowed in the R3 single-family detached residence district for the purpose of approving a paver patio.
So moved?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Pill, seconded by Commissioner Thomas. Question on the motion? May we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Pill?
Yes.
Commissioner Fleet?
Yes.
Commissioner Fidesco?
Yes.
Commissioner Anton votes yes. Chairman Richards?
Yes. All right, sir, you have our recommendation for approval. We are only a recommending board body, though. Staff can tell you when you go before the committee or the whole for their final approval.
Thank you very much.
Good luck to you, sir.
Thank you very much, everyone.
Next item, planning and zoning item 13031, Village of Westmont regarding a zoning code text amendment for the following: A, amend Appendix A, Article 8 of the Westmont Zoning Code regarding allowing medical cannabis cultivation and dispensing facilities as special uses within the M Manufacturing District.
Good evening. This past August, the state of Illinois approved the use of medicinal marijuana for very specific instances, and with that, up to 22 cultivation centers are permitted, and 60 dispensaries are permitted within the state. The law intends for the growing facilities and dispensaries to be dispersed throughout the state rather than focused in one area. As you can see on the map, there are 22 police districts throughout Illinois, and there's supposed to be no more than one cultivation center per each district, and our district, District 2, encompasses several counties, so you would only see one cultivation center within our area. The cultivation centers also have a distance requirement of 2,500 feet from schools and daycares, which makes it impossible for one to be located in Westmont. We provided a map in your packet, which also displays here. Through our GIS system, we were able to put a boundary around schools and daycares within Westmont of 2,500 feet, and that shows that a cultivation center where marijuana would be grown would not be permitted. The dispensaries have a distance requirement of 1,000 feet from schools and daycares, and they cannot be located in residential districts. The Illinois law states that municipalities cannot prohibit the facilities, but they can regulate their location. The facilities would not be the highest and best use on prime retail commercial corridors, so after research and comparison to other communities, staff recommends allowing dispensing facilities in M districts with a special use. With our research, staff mapped where the facilities could be located, potentially in M districts 1,000 feet from schools and daycares. So as you can see on the maps that we provided in your packet, there are three manufacturing districts located within Westmont. There's one in the Ty Warner area on the north side of town, and the areas that are not in a hatch are areas where a dispensing facility could be located. Also, on the south side of town, there are two manufacturing districts off 61st Street, and the north side of those districts could also be potential locations. This, with our research, we've determined that several of the other local municipalities are recommending very are recommending very similar regulations for the dispensing locations. Claridan Hills and Downers Grove are also recommending, Claridan Hills is recommending in their OR district, and Downers Grove is recommending in their manufacturing district as well. We also recommend adding the new definitions to our zoning code that are similar to what the state has defined as part of their act. And with that, I'm open to any questions.
I'll start with a comment on the cultivation facilities. I agree with staff that the only appropriate location would be the M district for any sort of, because we don't have an agricultural district, and based on the current size of our M district, which is located, and the distance requirements from schools, et cetera, that effectively precludes a cultivation center from being in the village. That being said, the law in Illinois on exclusionary zoning is that if a use is otherwise lawful, if someone comes in and says, "Well, I want this to go into a zoning district," the village has to consider that in good faith. We just can't say, "No, you're not allowed to come in." So if someone says, "I would like a cultivation facility in the B2 district," we'd have to process that, we'd have to hear about the request, what's involved, whether it would have harm, et cetera, and determine whether it's appropriate in some other district besides M, because while it's most appropriate in M, the, you know, the size or distance requirements preclude it. So, maybe that's more to make staff and all of you aware that we're not saying the use is not allowed, we're saying, as of right now, there's not an appropriate district for it, unless we get presented evidence otherwise.
And there could be some fluidity to some of the daycare facilities, that, you know, they may change hands or move, they may not be in place, so those boundaries won't necessarily always be constant.
But there again, to my understanding, under cultivation, there's 22 state police districts, so there's one per state police district.
Correct.
Which encompasses a fairly large area up here, which for cultivation purposes, I'm thinking they'd be able to do it much easier than in a town where they'd have to go for special uses and special permits and variances.
Text amendments, yes.
Text amendments and everything.
Right.
So we're doing it protecting ourselves by putting it in the M district and having a place where it's already there. Gotcha. Slow, but I'm here.
So for cultivation purposes, it'd be much easier for someone to go someplace else.
Right.
And they can only do one per state police district, so.
Gotcha. All right.
And then with the dispensaries, I know Chairman Richard, you asked, is there any limit to the number that could go within the town? It's 60 throughout the state, you said?
Correct, and the intention is to spread them out, but I don't think it's as specific as the cultivation center.
Right, there is, so the question is, can we limit it to one, for example, within the village? The answer is no. We can't limit the number, at least from everything that I've read. It's possible the state is promulgating rules that will go along with the law that was passed. Some communities are waiting to see how those rules come down before they act on any zoning. They may limit it to one. If that's the case, and this gets approved, you know, the village can always go back and further restrict it if necessary. What I've heard is similar to what staff has heard, that most communities are putting this in an M district as a special use. I have heard people question, what makes this sort of dispensary different than a CVS or a Walgreens pharmacy, where they're dispensing medicine that's legal under the state law? And, you know, I think the fact that the federal government does not recognize medical marijuana and still criminalizes marijuana creates some unique concerns. We don't have experience with this. We don't know if crime rate's going to increase, et cetera. And, you know, I think to your point, is a dispensary in a retail use along Ogden or Cass Avenue or down in our new Tiff district the highest and best use in that area? Probably not.
Is there any laws or rules on the books regarding consumption of said product?
Just like there would be with...
It couldn't be a smoking house like we have our tobacco.
Yeah, I don't know all those rules and regulations.
You're still not allowed to smoke indoors, and it's also, you're not allowed to smoke in public places, you're not allowed to smoke at schools, and it's restricted to a certain number of ounces. And you can't, you know, update your prescription. It's, you know, very similar to other regular prescriptions.
And the public intoxication rules apply as well, whether you're walking down the sidewalk or driving a car or whatever.
So the long and the short of it is, are we amending Appendix A to mirror state law?
We would be mirroring their definitions, and then we would be updating our manufacturing district to allow it as an approved use, with a special use.
The state law doesn't specify what zoning district it is to go in. It just says local communities can regulate the use under its zoning powers.
Okay.
And Shannon, this is outside the comprehensive plan. I remember seeing anything about that.
It was not covered in the comprehensive plan.
Something new, all right.
Not anticipated when that began about two years ago.
Marijuana's coming back, you know?
It's been discussed for years and years, and when they finally decided to take action, it moved really quickly.
Oh, yeah.
Yes.
Can't fix pension, but they got that.
True.
True.
Let's have, not go by any order, if anybody has any questions, just, we'll do an open shout if you would. Anybody with any questions, please?
I think this is probably as good a use as any, or good a zone to put it into. I mean, in reading the paper on it, I certainly, I don't have any arguments with it.
One question could be, is the amount of space available in the M district sufficient enough to say, yes, this is a real bona fide zoning district where use can go? Or are there only 10 properties, for example, where this can go, and someone can say, you've essentially made this exclusionary zoning? You know, I think, you know, is it less than 10 percent of all properties within the village where we've said these can go? You know, it's a fair argument. I think, given the concerns and the right to regulate and the fact there is available space, the village is okay, but, you know, that's something we'd have to take up if someone wants to come and fight it.
Well, you know, speaking along those lines, John, the M district up by Ty Warner Park, which surrounds it, is all large industrial buildings. Wouldn't be too great for the dispensing, but when you look at the Anchor Rock down there with all of the multitude of small offices that they have, and then the Zimut property over at Industrial, there's quite a few storefronts that they could occupy.
Yeah, it'd be a hard one to really say that we're...
So it's, I don't think anybody could say that we're...
Yeah, good.
We're not giving them enough room to go somewhere.
Unless you have in different locations of the city that just aren't all north, just not all south, you have...
I think it's, I think it's...
We're saying it's allowed, just not up north, out of sight. We're saying that it would be okay here, here, or here.
Right. Keep in mind, though, that parts of those areas are eliminated by virtue of the fact that they're too close to a boundering area, so.
But when you look at Anchor Rock, they don't have 30 offices or 35 offices in Anchor Rock alone. And then you go over to Zimut, he's got those U-shaped buildings that he puts up.
Right, well, the whole, the whole south part and the connecting level of the H are no good. They can only use the north part.
Of which, which are you speaking of?
Of however you pronounce that.
Zigman?
Zigman, yeah.
Yeah, Zimut.
Only use the part that's along 61st Street, but that's rather good size there.
It is, it's very good size.
It's very good size. There's a number of buildings there with spaces, you know, subdivided into office industrial...
I'm just saying that it's not the whole area that's...
No, it's not, you're right.
But Zimut's probably got 20 buildings alone at his 61st Street address, and then Anchor Rock is, I'll bet you the venture to say there's at least 30 offices in there.
That are available?
Yeah. Well, you know, they're rentable. They're separate offices.
Okay. Potentially available.
Potentially available. I know, I used to rent one.
Yeah, I think it's a good...
I think, I think it's great.
Fair number.
I think it's very well thought out and done.
Nice job, Shannon. Yeah, first of all, you got the 1,000-foot barriers that we have. And we're constrained in that, except for maybe a changing location of daycare centers, but that can be updated as needed. And with the, our town is long and it's narrow, and there's, things are dotted across the landscape. There's only so many areas, and I think we've mapped those out, and nothing else to do until somebody comes before us.
Interestingly, if the state felt so compelled to put this 1,000-foot restriction on this, that means they've acknowledged this use is different than your ordinary pharmacy, where there's no similar type restriction. So they treat this differently. I think the village is right to treat it differently, put it in an M district and treat it as a special use.
And then if somebody comes in and wants in another district, we'll, like you said, we'll deal with that?
Yeah, I mean, in this case, we tell them, no, there's a district where it's allowed. If you want to waste your time processing a text amendment, you certainly can, and yeah, to your point, I guess you'd have to consider it, but...
It's better to have it on the books, so you can say, yeah, we have a district, than...
Right. Then they can't say we're doing it just against them. It's already in place, so.
Right.
As long as we're not arbitrarily discriminating against anybody, in which I can't see that we are here, so I think we stand on very good legal footing. Any further...
I'd just like to commend Jill for her hard work on this case, and also, although she's not here with us this evening, Kim Nichol, our planning engineer for the math exhibits, she just whipped these together with a lot of hard work, and it made it so easy to really drill down and find out, you know, what we had to work with, really.
Thanks, Kim.
I would also like to thank Jill for her diligent work on studying marijuana in all aspects, Jill. Your dedication is to be commended.
Very high in her work.
Dedicated, dedicated.
Take your breath off. All right.
Is anybody from the public?
They're busy.
Well, seeing that there is nobody in the public audience, we will close the public comment, okay. I believe we've discussed this fairly well.
Yeah.
Okay, under Planning and Zoning Item 13031, I would entertain a motion to recommend approval to the Board of Trustees, Item A. amend Appendix A, Article 8 of the Westmont Zoning Code regarding allowing medical cannabis cultivation and dispensing facilities as special uses within the M Manufacturing District.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Fidesco, seconded by Commissioner Anton.
For Jill.
Question on the motion? May we have roll call, please?
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Pill?
Yes.
Commissioner Flea?
Yes.
Commissioner Fidesco?
Yes.
Commissioner Anton votes yes. Chairman Richards?
Yes. Anybody have any further business to bring before the board? Commissioner Flea?
No, I was talking to a person who recently, within the last year or so, finished building a house in Westmont, and I asked, well, how did it go? And he said, well, you know, overall, it's said and done. But I sort of felt like they were nickelled and dimed. They didn't get a full cost of what it was going to cost them in terms of permits and everything coming in, and now part of this could have been, you know, contractor and communication, but they just felt that every time they turned around, they were having to write a check for something that they didn't expect. And I don't know, having never gone through that process myself with you guys, other than for little stuff, as opposed to building a house, I don't have any other way to measure it on my own, but I know this person for a long time, and figured if he had a gripe about it, then it must have been something. And again, I don't know how the process works, but just as an anecdote evidence, so he just said that, he didn't get, he didn't fully got a full scope of what pricing would be or cost would be from on permitting.
Well, we have a standard methodology for permitting. It's all by code, so we have a booklet that's put together to kind of explain during preliminary meetings before someone has applied for a permit, you know, depending on the scope of their project, what the costs may run. With single-family construction, it's very much à la carte, I would say, because it depends on the number of fixtures and, you know, plumbing, electrical, the square footage of the property. It depends how responsive an architect can be, so sometimes there are review cycles that where we're getting, you know, a plan review rejected, and they have to make a resubmital, and that's an expense, and sometimes when there's a second or even third review occasionally, that would definitely be a time where that could be an unanticipated cost. But we do try to make that all as straightforward as possible with preliminary meetings and, you know, letting folks know what steps are to be expected. But I'd be happy to talk to you maybe offline about, more about the particulars.
Could I ask a question? Is that strictly that information packet given to the builder, or is that also given to the owner, if the owner has an architect slash builder?
It's given to anyone that would like it, and oftentimes, it's just amongst the owner and the builder. They decide themselves who's going to be the point person, but it's available to anyone.
Yeah, I would suggest that if you have an owner and a builder that each receive a copy, because sometimes the communications may not be that good.
Certainly.
And so you want the owner who's actually paying the bill to understand, and if they read through it, they'll have a better understanding.
Sure.
My suggestion.
Shannon, would you make the public aware of the hours of respect to be paid for Bill?
Oh, boy, I have to use my memory on this.
I just looked it up.
From 2 to 8, and that's Modell and Darian.
Modell on South Cass, yeah.
And then Saturday, it's a church in Downers Grove at 10:00 a.m. to 11:00. I believe all the details are on the village webpage, though.
They're on the very front and top center of the village webpage.
Yeah, the church name is escaping me. My head's a little...
I didn't mean to put you on...
No, no, that's okay. More folks we can tell about it.
Okay, I'd just like to wish everybody a very happy Thanksgiving.
Same to you.
And we'll see you in December. Motion to adjourn?
So moved. Second?
Motion by Commissioner Anton, seconded by Commissioner Fidesco. Excuse me. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.